The first item now, Jean, there's nothing on the agenda that we're going to not discuss. On every item on the agenda?
Every item is going to be red.
Okay, good. Our first item will be 100 Dale Street request for release of an $8,000 performance bond. So what's up with that?
In June of 2013, a watershed special permit was issued to construct two dwellings. They are now, I believe, 96 and 100 Dale Street. Each has been constructed, a CO has been issued for each of them, an as-built plan has been submitted, an engineer certification letter has been submitted. They've met requirements for the bond release.
Okay. And you're okay with releasing it all?
Yes.
Anybody have any questions? So would somebody like to make a motion to release the remaining bond for this watershed permit at 100 Dale Street?
Could this be 96 and 100, or was it two separate?
It was permitted as 100 Dale Street. It started as one lot. It was divided into two. So as far as our permit, it was 100 Dale Street and an $8,000 bond because we considered 4,000 for each of the lots.
I'll make a motion to release the watershed special permit bond of 8,000 for 100 Dale Street.
Okay, and plus accrued interest.
Yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. I want to do one item out of water because it's going to go pretty quick. It's on the town meeting warrant acceptance, Article 13 Stanton Way.
Okay, so Stanton Way is a definitive subdivision plan. It has petition for a street acceptance. The DPW Conservation Department, the Health Department, and Town Council have all reviewed the material and recommended favorable action. The Board of Selectmen have a street layout meeting on April 11th, which is next Monday, and they will look for your recommendation as well. Town Council recommends the matter of acceptance of Stanton Way as a public way favorably reported to the Board of Selectmen, subject to final review of fully executed conveyance documents and developer council's updated certification of title. So that's all, again, a formality once this.
Are we agreeing to be able to get this information prior to town meeting? Is the applicant here?
The applicant is here. Yes.
If you could come up and sit at the table for a quick second, and if you would identify yourself for the record.
Michael Green, Green &amp; Company, regarding Stanton Way.
And so there are a couple of things that the Town Council wants to get in terms of additional documentation. Any issues with that? Should you be able to provide them?
Unless there are things I haven't heard of.
No, so it's fully executed conveyance documents. So once street acceptance happens, they're going to convey the documents. Town Council will review those at that time.
Okay.
Yeah. No problem at all.
So you're okay with that? So any questions from the board? Any questions from the audience? If none, does somebody want to make a recommendation for favorable action on this article to accept the street?
The public works.
Recommend favorable action, that the board recommend favorable action on?
Article 13.
Article 13, Stanton Way.
Okay. Whoever wants a big second. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay, great.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Okay, moving right along, we're going back to our public hearings. 1665 Great Pond. Where do we stand for that?
1665, 300 of the last hearing, there was discussion surrounding the infiltration from the roof runoff. A downspout was added to the front of the roof and directed to the infiltration trench design. The board requested that that infiltration trench be increased in order to handle one inch runoff volume. The applicant has increased that. So it was previously designed at a half inch. It's now been increased to an inch runoff volume. The grades of the proposed driveway were also a point of discussion. So the driveway of the upper portion will be overlaid. The slope of that will be directed towards the pervious yard area. The lower end, the applicant has had subsequent discussions to respond to Gene Willis's comments related to runoff. Gene has submitted comments saying he is satisfied that a driveway permit will be required post-construction, and the applicant has submitted a letter related to the design of the lower end. So those were the only outstanding items.
Okay. Well, the applicant's hearing has put up a nice picture of everything. So if you could first identify yourself and maybe give us a brief synopsis of anything that we should hear that we have not already heard.
Good evening. I'm Dennis Grecchi with Anover Consultants, an engineer on behalf of the Applicant Technical Training Foundation Trust. And as Ms. Enright just explained, we have made some revisions to the plans based on comments from various town departments, as well as Lisa Eggleston. And they were basically summarized. We increased the roof charge runoff system. We adjusted the grades of the driveway overlay to encourage recharge of runoff in the landscape yard area. We've also identified the annual mean high water of Lake Cochise Chouik, which is also by definition the top of bank. We've increased, excuse me, we've directed the rooftop runoff from the front portion of the dwelling to the rear infiltration system. And we've also worked with the Director of Engineering to resolve the driveway permit requirement, which the applicant has agreed to, or the owner, or any subsequent owner will apply for a permit as requested by Gene.
That's, I remember when I presented that, and they weren't going to do anything if that's right.
And they're still not going to. So at the lower portion of it, so within 100 feet of the annual high water mark, they are not going to. But Gene Willis is requiring there to be a driveway permit based on the proposed development, and they've agreed to submit for a driveway permit.
Is there a timeline on requirement submission?
At least prior to work on the driveway, we'll need to submit for that permit.
Prior to?
Prior to any work done to the overlay of the driveway.
The upper portion.
So prior to the CO?
Yeah, prior to any disturbance on site, I would think.
And the other question, Jennifer Hughes had submitted comments related to the delineation being possibly an estimate as opposed to a real wetland delineation. Norse Environmental has submitted a letter certifying that it is a delineation. It is not an estimate from Ray's Pond.
Do you have any questions?
Just talking about Jennifer's Hughes letter.
Yep.
She noted here that the approximation in her letter says does not accurately reflect it.
That's what she believed to be the case, and the applicant has hired Norse Environmental to certify that it is in fact a delineation.
And did Jennifer have a chance to comment on that?
She received them, had a chance to comment. She didn't provide any comments.
Okay. And I did review the video from the last meeting, and recall the discussions about the driveway. And my understanding was that they do not want to have to go to conservation, and that was one of the reasons that they were not going to touch the driveway. So now there is going to be driveway work, and just having a hard time reconciling.
Yeah, I thought you said there wasn't.
Again, it's the same driveway work they proposed at the last hearing. So the upper portion, they are going to do driveway work, and they're going to grade it towards a pervious area. The lower portion within the 100 feet, they are not going to do work.
But why would they need a permit?
Gene Willis is requiring it. I think he just wants proof that they haven't disturbed anything in the lower portion. He submitted the comments, the applicant worked with him.
I mean, to some degree, I think the applicant is probably being a little bit of Pennywise, Pound Foolish, because at the point in time at which they actually have to refix the driveway, they're going to have to come back to both the conservation and the planning board. And they could have gotten it done all at once now, but they, for whatever reason in their wisdom, chose not to. But that's what will have to happen in the future.
Right.
I think, if I remember that conversation, they were thinking that the owner or occupant of the property would be the one who would probably do the applying for it.
In fact, probably if the conditions don't include it, would say is if there's going to be any change to the driveway, they will have to come back to the planning board and to the conservation commission. So it's clear that I just forgot, you know, or I didn't know I was supposed to do this, or, yeah.
So in reviewing that video of the last meeting, it seemed like it was a, you know, very acknowledged, you know, approach to avoid conservation. And you had commented that this is one of the properties closest to the lake that we've had to deal with. And, you know, just in the course of discussing it, you know, are we comfortable that?
But see, the thing is, it's negative. The thing about it is they are not doing anything, and the risk is that they do something that it's not scrutinized and not reviewed. And that's, the point is if they choose not to do something, that's their business. But if two years from now they realize they should repave the driveway or done something else on the driveway, then they're going to have to come back to both the planning board and the conservation commission. Does your applicant, is it aware of that?
Yes.
Okay. Because I guarantee it's going to happen in a few years, because they're going to want to repave the driveway. And if they repave the driveway, they're going to have to come to the planning board and to the conservation commission.
Correct. And we have, I'm sorry.
Is there? Go ahead.
Well, I was saying, we have worked with Jennifer Hughes, and we've responded to several of her comments. And the project was fully reviewed by Lisa Eggleston, the same way she would if we filed with conservation. So this project itself has been scrutinized just as much as it would have been had we filed with conservation.
So that's a little bit the mystery to me, is that what you're doing is you're causing more work for yourself, because you're not going enough to go back in the future for another process. And you could have gotten all done now.
It's been scrutinized, but the lower portion, if it was to be reconstructed, would also be required to slope towards a pervious area, and a slope would be required so that it doesn't slope towards great river.
Yeah, maybe you even put that in there, even there now.
Again, I don't think the decision conditions it that strongly, but we can certainly add a condition that if it is to be overlaid at the lower portion, that they need to come back, and that will be the requirement. Because the DPW doesn't allow it to sheet flow into a roadway, a public roadway.
Mentioning of where the lower portion starts.
Yes, the line.
It needs to be very specific.
So the area of the driveway that's supposed to be overlaid is this light gray area. This is the 100-foot buffer from the lake, from the resource area. So that's the portion of the driveway we're proposing to overlay. We're actually reducing the square footage of the driveway.
And John, is there any sense here that by not doing it now and after all the construction is done, that what, planning or conservation, that the options would be limited, because at that point, well, you've already done everything, and we don't want to inconvenience you because you've already done everything, and?
Well, it would be, I don't think it's probably.
Is it boxing in?
It may be that you, they might make that argument, but I don't think there's anything in it that's an engineering argument. And that's part of the reason why I want to put it in the decision.
Right, good. I think that's a great idea. And then the other question I had from, again, watching the video, and I think my recollection is correct, it was a brief discussion about the size of the new house. And I thought that the applicant responded by saying, well, it's approximately the same size. And is that good enough? Or does there need to be something more specific in terms of the size?
The amount of impervious surface is reduced by just over 700 square feet, and that's in the decision.
And what about the actual size of the structure compared to the existing foundation? Because I thought the comment was.
The plans show, right, they show an exact set of dimensions, and they have to follow that exactly. So we do have that.
Right.
And is there any difference between the current footprint and the future footprint of the structure?
The sizes are changing. The new proposed dwelling is slightly larger than the existing dwelling. And as Ms. Enright stated, there is an overall reduction in impervious area on the site. The patio proposed in the rear of the yard is smaller than the existing patio. And as I previously stated, the driveway is being reduced in overall square footage.
What's the difference in the size of the planned structure versus the current footprint of the structure?
I don't have that information.
Well, is that the proposed dwelling?
Yep.
And I'm looking at 28 by 38 by 24. So, I mean, is that, is that proposed dwelling, is that accurate?
Yes, those matches are accurate.
It's not going to be bigger than that?
No.
And is that the size of the current footprint?
As I stated, it's slightly larger than the existing dwelling.
So can you help us with what slightly is? I don't want to be picky. I just, it seems like it's an approximation, and the answer must be available.
Yeah, we can figure that out. And as I stated before, and as Enright stated, we've increased the size of the rooftop infiltration system to accommodate a full one-inch of runoff from the.
And there's no SCOM water management today on the site.
Correct. And the regulations state that we should, I think, approximate, or, excuse me, approximate the recharge that's currently happening on the site. So I would say with our sloping of the driveway and also the rooftop runoff system, we're more than increasing the recharge volume.
Yeah, I'm not questioning that. I mean, that's great to hear. It just, I.
They did have to go to ZPA to get the variance to rebuild the house. So the hot, whatever was approved by ZPA, they have to, they can't exceed, because they have to go to the variance process for the watershed, because it's being raised. So they can't change, they can't change it now.
I see that as 1736 square feet, probably two stories, right?
Ah, yes.
It doesn't matter, it's the footprint.
Yeah, right, right. So I don't want to, you know.
No, it's fine. I mean, it's a little bit, what we have is, I think if you're looking at it, arguably, you could make the argument that house never should have been built there to begin with, but the house was built there. And there are certain sort of residual rights that I think you get associated with that. So we either have the choice of replicating what was there before, or replacing it with something that's, it's a little bit different. And the, what they've said is, if you look at the pluses of the new approach, is that it's got much better drainage associated with it, because there's infiltration of the stuff coming off the roof. There's also a net decrease in the amount of impervious surface, so that more of it would seep into the ground. And, you know, you can make the argument as an offset, then it's a little bit bigger than it was before. My feeling a little bit is, we ask our engineer to really push us through the paces on this one. I mean, I don't think there's anything at all wrong with your questions. I think they're the right questions to ask, because after all, this is right across the street from the lake. This is really important business. We should take it very seriously. I just think, you know, sure to say, no, you can't build anything at all, which I don't think we have really the ability to do. We've come up with something that's reasonable and fair. Yeah, I wish they had done the driveway now as part of it, but I think we'll have a hook in there if they want to do anything in the future.
Just given the length of time it takes to go before conservation and the planning board with an additional thing, I mean, I can understand why you wouldn't pave the driveway before construction, because you're going to be running traffic over trucks. But, I mean, you could be basically have a finished house and have to sit for a couple of months with us.
I have to say, I was really struck in watching the video, that, you know, the applicant was just very direct about, we want to avoid going before conservation. And with a property that's so close to the lake, I, you know, it was striking to hear that strategy.
Well, there is, they do take the risk that by the time that they finish the construction with the heavy equipment, that the building inspector won't give them an occupancy because it's an unsafe condition. I mean, there is a high risk of that with that heavy equipment going over that driveway and the condition it's in right now. So they're taking the risk. They might not get an occupancy, you know. You know, that's their risk. I mean, unfortunately, I don't think we can make them do it at this time, but that's a huge risk they're putting on it. That's why I think we put in the decision that we're not going to make this a minor modification for a watershed special permit, and they will have to come back to us. If they don't want to do it now, I mean, it's a small amount to do now, you're right.
It just seems like an odd strategy when it's that close to a resource that the town values so highly in terms of public health with drinking water.
And whoever buys it's going to give a copy of this decision too, which I would think would put a, why would a buyer want to take on doing this? You know?
And where it impacts public drinking water, it raised the flag for me. Why avoid conservation?
Well, could we?
That's what that resource is.
Correct.
Public drinking water.
Correct.
I mean, the thing that we can even do to tighten it up even further is that if we have you conduct an inspection to see if there's further deterioration of that when it's done, and make a determination about whether it's required or not, you know?
Yep.
Well, I appreciate the, you know, discussion and the opportunity to ask the questions.
Yeah, no, I mean, as I said, I don't feel that, even though it's taking a fair amount of time, this is the kind of deliberation we should have on something this serious.
Great, well, thank you.
Yeah.
So the pre-construction site, does it document existing conditions and then a post?
Yeah. So the public hearing is still open. If we have other questions we want to ask in the public, we should do that before we close the hearing, otherwise we should close the hearing and then vote on it.
I guess I do have one more.
Okay, that's fine.
In the video. It was discussion of the driveway and not doing anything, and whether or not that would trigger sprinklers. And at least my recollection of the video was the board left that as a question. And I wondered if the applicant has come back with any response to that question that the board had asked, what do you plant?
I don't know if that's been addressed. I know that the driveway is of adequate width, and I guess that'd be conversation with the fire department if they would require us to put in sprinklers.
Actually, yeah.
As we've learned, they have to do that anyway.
It's building code.
Now it's a matter of code.
Correct. I think it's also, that was the fire code.
Well, it's a fire code, but it attached to the building.
Yeah, so I think that would be discussed with the, with the fire department.
Yeah, well, it's not adequate with, for, the length of it exceeds the, you'd have to put a shoulder on it, and that shoulder to support a fire truck would be in the watershed special.
Yeah, I mean, I just think you're going to have to almost be pushed down the path of a sprinkler, and not even because of anything that we're doing, it's because if, in order to have, as Lynn said, in order to have sufficient width and support to carry a truck, you would have to do work in that 100-foot area, which.
Right.
Case you would have to come back anyway, so.
Yeah, and if it's required, the applicant is comfortable putting in a sprinkler system into the house.
Yeah, okay. It just seems we've got some open items here. I don't know if we're ready, are we ready to reach a decision?
Well, what else is open?
Well, that's enough, I think. Are they going to have sprinklers?
If it's required.
If they don't have to, it's not, I mean, we could put that in as a condition, or we can, basically, we should leave it according to what the law says. We could put a condition in that says that.
I think one of my concerns is, you know, my understanding is the driveway is not sufficient width, and, you know, your, at least first comment was, it is the sufficient width. So I think that's something that, you know, if we can condition this in some way to note that it is not sufficient.
If it's, yeah, if it's required by the fire department or by the building code, then the applicant will be compelled to put one in. I think that's, it can be in the condition.
I mean, I think you would put a condition in as saying that you have to file, follow the requirements.
NFPA 1, I believe it's.
Yeah, and just leave it at that. And, you know, you can stay with it to make sure that they don't get talked into it being sufficient width by them coming in and talking to the fire officer, and not all the same story we have, so, you know.
We can require an engineer certification that it meets NFPA 1.
Maybe that's what you do.
We listed that for a recent subdivision.
That would be.
So similar to the as-built certification from an engineer, we can require it for this project.
Great, yeah.
I don't believe I included that, but it can be included as a condition.
Yeah, okay. Okay, anything else?
Thank you, Hugh.
If there is nothing more, would somebody like to make a motion to close the public hearing?
We close the public hearing on 1665 Great Pond Road.
Watershed special permit, right?
Watershed.
Yeah, okay. You have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, here's the decision.
So my question is, I have on the first page, it says improvements to existing driveway. So you want to say improvements to the part of the driveway, right? I think we need to be very specific.
Yeah, very specific. Beyond, in fact, do it by the number of feet from the edge of the property line.
Yeah, good.
Good catch.
Jean, in terms of the first paragraph, the zoning bylaw.
Okay, let her get that first one.
It ends at, it was 10.3. On page three, we say in accordance with 10.31.
I can add them both to each of them.
I think in the second paragraph of page two, we have to make the same modification to being specific about improvements to existing driveway, third line of the second paragraph.
On page two?
Yeah.
And they have to change the date. It's not much.
practices, what I would also, I want to make sure whether you do it as an example, best management practices, but mention that the fact that there's, you know, we have all of the ways to mitigate the water flow, you know, through the roof runoff and so forth, beyond what we normally do.
I think when you go through Roman numerals on page three, that's better.
Okay, then that's fine, just as long as, yeah.
Jean, in the definitions, you refer to applicant with a capital A, and in the body of the text, you refer to applicant with a lowercase, to keep it in the nitpicky.
Absolutely. Where are you on the permit definition?
Your answer?
Yep.
On the 712 square feet.
Yeah.
Page, dated on the permit definitions on page four.
Yeah, and on page three, I think I remember there were two cases, but in the Roman numerals there, number four, the applicant lowercase, probably should make it per case. And there is another one someplace too.
That's okay, I'll search them up.
On page three, and Roman numeral number three, the grades on the proposed driveway overlay, should we put the upper portion or whatever we're going to use for a definition on it, to make sure that they, we, they realize it's only the portion that they're overlaying?
Just overlay portion?
Yeah, that'll work, yeah.
Proposed new drive.
Yeah, okay, yeah.
The other lowercase applicant is up, but Roman numeral two, first line.
Okay. So I think we'd have to add similar to subdivisions prior to a CO being issued, the condition for the certification for the fire code being that.
Yeah.
So I'll add prior to CO.
Also, my word prior to CO is about the, if there's damage to the roadway, you know.
Yeah, and the driveway.
Yes. On this one, when we, the updated draft comes out, Pete, can you pay particular close attention to just the final edits?
Yeah, sure. In the top of page three, or the middle of page three, where we. In the top of page three, or the middle of page three, where we, section C, Roman numeral five, these restrictions will be noted on the deed. This has to do with fertilizer. Is there anything that we've ever put into a decision like this that comments on how are the future homeowners aware of that? We've had some instances of property owners who would come to us and say, oh, I didn't know that was the case. I didn't know that was a restriction. So have we ever put in decisions, something that says how the homeowner and future homeowners are made aware of that?
The requirement is for a deed restriction, and so through the purchase and sale, that restriction is part of the deed.
So it's a record, it's an actual recorded decision.
Yeah, I mean, there's, there's a little bit of caveat here, I mean.
On the deed restriction, you have the, we have the seal, oh, coal-based tar, seal and civilian there. Okay, yeah.
Okay, everybody, is 4,000 enough considering what they're going to be doing in terms of erosion control and the?
It's consistent with what we've done for a replacement of a single-family home.
Is it?
It is very consistent. So we can do more if you'd like, but it's, building new structures in the watershed, typically it's been a $1,000 bond. In DL Street example, earlier, they were building two and it was 8,000.
Can you just change the dates?
Yes, yeah. When last meeting got canceled, this was all prepared for them and I moved it in, but I won't.
Any other comments? If done, would somebody like to make a motion to approve the decision as amended this evening?
We approve the decision as amended.
The watershed special permit.
Watershed title permit decision.
Sixteen sixty-five Great Pond Road. Okay. You have a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, here we go.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Back to, we have another public hearing, it's right at the luke, so exciting. Twenty-three oh-two Turnpike Street earthworks.
Yes, so twenty-three oh-two earthworks. At the last presentation, there were still some revisions being made to the site plan. But one fairly large outstanding topic was the architectural renderings. And the applicant is here to provide those, along with some modifications to the site plan. So the driveway, if you remember, Gene Willis requested the driveway be moved to approximately 70 feet further from Turnpike Street. That has been accommodated, as well as Tim Willett comments were outstanding. As of literally 5:40 this afternoon, Tim Willett communicated that he has met with the applicant. He is satisfied with plan revisions related to connection of the sewer and water lines from Turnpike Street. So the DPW review, I believe, has been satisfied. Lisa Eggleston has communicated that her stormwater concerns have all been addressed. So really, the, I would say the largest of the outstanding issues is the architectural renderings in terms of the site plan. So Jill, you are here.
My name.
I just have to.
Before you start, identify yourself in the record.
Of course I will. Jill Nan, here on behalf of the applicant, Earthworks. I don't know where, oh, there's Dan. Dan Gill, the principal of Earthworks. And Christopher Rogers, the site design engineer here this evening. There's our unveiling. I think you could see that we did a lot of work to the facade of the building in an attempt to make it more palatable to the board. I apologize for the time delay because I realized we were supposed to come back to the next meeting, but we did not want to come back to the board without, with a product. It was not a finished product. So what you see before you, and it actually is shown even better on the overhead views, because you can just see it much more clearly and crisp, the materials. Previously, we had indicated that we were going to use metal fabricated panels. This particular design does not use metal fabricated panels. They do for underlying support, however, the entire structure is ephesus and cultured stone. So what you see is really all natural, what you will see is all natural materials. You're not going to see any panels of metal. It is a metal roof, and that's basically delineated in the, in the architectural plans that were provided. We did try and tone down the building in, in order to give it more of an appeal when you're driving into Middleton, I mean, from Middleton into North Andover. And that's why we tried to go with the earth tones. This is the color that we're proposing to actually construct the building. And so it'll be those brown and earth tones that blend in very nicely with the surrounding environment. What the architect actually does is he takes the plan and superposes it on a picture of the actual site, then he took the landscaping plan that Mr. Gill had designed and superposes that as well into his CAD drawing so that you can really see what the building will look like when it is completed. So that is the front and elevation, and you can see it here as well. And this is just, we figured we'd give you the back view so you could see what you look out onto. So when you're looking forward, you can see what is, is the vision, is the viewscape. And basically, it's more trees. And then here's the back of the building, where the driveway is. As Ms. Enright had said, we did have a couple of open items last time as well, which was to get the sign off from Mr. Willett, which we did. We got the sign off from Lisa Eggleston. And just so you know, we are in the process of receiving our order of condition from the conservation commission. They had asked that we complete this process because if the board wanted some additional change, they asked that we obtain that from you, then go back and, and deliver to them the final plan.
We don't have the last. We don't have that last plan, but we have the interior layout.
Oh, you don't have this one? I didn't email that one to you?
No.
It didn't come? I think it might be in the set, though, that I hand-delivered to you then.
Okay.
On the big.
So that was hand-delivered today? So the board did not receive it, but that's okay, you can speak to that.
Yeah, we tried.
Okay.
So this is just, this is just the rear rendering of the, of the building. And the last time we spoke as well, there were, the board was asking us if we would agree to certain conditions and in fact did modify our long-term pollution plan to be site-specific. We did have a discussion regarding the storage bays and the fact that we would comply with all, all building code requirements regarding storage of materials and that we would specifically entertain a condition that limited any storage of pesticides or fertilizers and that type of material. And we also would agree to a condition, clearly, that all of the storage is accessory to the principal uses of the property, because that's required pursuant to your building, your use regulations. One of the other things is we do have a washing bay, and we would also entertain a condition that said that there was no outdoor washing in the parking area, it was simply to be maintained within the washing bay located within the back building. So I don't know if the board has.
Just the words entertain?
Entertain.
Does that mean you're going to have?
Well, you, you would, you impose it, that's why. So absolutely, I mean.
Yeah, I think we said we wanted no outdoor washing.
Right, and we're absolutely not going to have it. So by that, I simply was being polite and saying, yes, of course, you impose it, we're going to do it. Or observe it, I should say, correct? And I don't know if you have any other questions. I think for the most part, the questions had been building material, design style. You really didn't like that outdoor on-deck look and you felt that the, the flanks of the building didn't blend well. And we, the architect worked very hard to make sure they did with this particular design.
So, the design, the private design consultant is here today.
I think it looks great.
Yeah, I think it looks better than.
It looks great.
When I sent it to you, she thought it was a little bit nicer.
The other one looked like a ski lodge.
I know.
I think this is good.
Thank you.
I do like the top, where the, where the gray panels are.
The entire property is going to have a lot of.
No, no, no.
No, see the, see the gray panel? She's asking if, if that's lighted behind it, if you have lights inside.
I'm not saying a lot opposed, I'm just curious, you know.
We don't, we don't necessarily know. I mean, we do have a full-blown lighting plan, which Mr. Rogers has come up with just for safety in the parking lot. But the actual building surrounding all the landscape will have nice.
Uplights, yeah.
Uplighting, real low voltage, really kind of a sexy feel to it, so it's, you know, gives a nice look coming up 114.
Are those like a skylight opaque panel glass, or are they?
No, no, no glass up top.
Okay, so then it wouldn't be backlit.
That's why, I didn't know if you meant like, you know, that.
Well, no, sometimes they can, sometimes they're opaque glass.
Oh, like when you have the, almost fluorescent behind it, right? And people do that, right?
And then are those actual wood or is it a composite? Because you mentioned ephesus, that's why.
Ephesus is on, I'd, I'd bet that he's going to use composite for all the trim. Because it's otherwise.
Well, if you're using ephesus, my recommendation, wood checks and you're going to be repairing it ephesus all the time.
Yeah, maintenance-wise, long-term, we want to try to keep it as, you know, maintenance-free as possible.
Yeah, especially if you're using ephesus, you don't want any cracks.
Yeah, so I'm sure they're using composite, that's.
Exterior.
It's a stucco. But no, it's, it's much more depth in stucco.
Right, but I, it's, ephesus is an acronym and it's a blown-on material.
Okay, so it's the stuff that looks like a stucco.
But it's all insulation of the wall that's behind it. You have big problems with it.
And then I just, I do have, I think it was included in your package. I do have a copy of what the sign will look like that is shown on the property. So it's just going to be basically two stone panels. I think it's the very last sheet potentially. It's two stone pillars, panels, two stone pillars and then the sign in the middle. And that is, Danny, that's being up.
That will be lit.
But internally or up?
I don't believe, just in dealing with doing the police station in town, I don't think you can internally light a sign.
I thought we were uplighted, okay.
I think they have.
Oh, and there it is, okay, great, here you go.
It has to be externally lit, as far as I remember.
That's exactly true, I remember that.
It does need to be.
If I remember, we're all wired up with a sign for two.
Oh, really? Well, good news, it's only uplighted. And then that sign is actually using the same cultured stone that's on, as, as what is on the building.
I have a question.
Please.
It's a flat roof, where are your mechanicals gone?
Danny, are you putting them on the roof or down?
Probably, we're going to have a whole mechanical room inside the building, all AC units and such. We want to try to keep it as sleek and clean as possible. So there'll be an entire mechanical room.
That's always one of the things we ask each other, particularly if it's a flat roof, because we don't want the mechanicals sitting on top of the roof.
Yeah, I mean, if we don't, if we can avoid any penetration to the roof, to me, it's just, could, you know, eventually cause problems in the future. So we're going to try to keep it clean in a mechanical room inside the building. There's plenty of space in the building to do so, so.
Any other questions?
Is that something you consider conditioning? Yes.
That's, that's fine.
Yep, that's all, sure.
So Jill, is it either on the ground outside or inside?
Yes, with nothing on the roof.
Gina, is there anything more we need to address?
No, that's.
I mean, all the technical questions are all answered.
There's a significant stormwater review associated with this, and it's still open with conservation, however.
So, what do we do? Keep it open and then be ready to vote next time?
I'll draft a decision for next hearing. We actually drafted one, but I felt there was just a few too many items still open.
Yeah, there's, yeah. So we'll do that, we'll vote the next time. Yeah, okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your time.
And I'm glad you liked the design.
It does.
Thanks very much. So now we have a public hearing, actual public hearings for some of the zoning articles. There's articles nine, ten, and eleven, and then we're going to have discussions with the two of the articles, right?
Yes.
For, correct me, or nine to 10 are our articles? No, nine's ours.
Nine is, and there's probably.
Is that a, that's a technical article, right? So let's hold that over.
Yep, I agree.
And do that after. Ten is, is one of our articles that we've done a conjunction with Edgewood, so. Let's do that one, and then we'll, then we'll do, is eleven a technical one, too?
The CBD three, is that eleven?
No, no, that's not a technical one, I'm sorry, that's a, yeah.
So the continual care retirement.
Okay, so we'll do ten and eleven.
Yeah, and the CBD three, and both applicants are here.
So why don't we on ten, I think we're all pretty familiar with it, at least we are, but this is meant to be a meeting in public, so if you could explain a little bit of what we're trying to do, and then we can also bring the project proponent in as well to answer any questions if we have any.
I'm sorry, just let me find this article. So this article proposes to amend the CCRC bylaw, section 13, in order, Edgewood has presented.
So if you could step back a little bit, then maybe, just because it is on TV as well, just what CCRC is and why we need to have change.
Yep, so CCRC is a continual care retirement center. It's a section of the bylaw that allows development for this type of project within the R2, and it also has some density requirements.
And also within the R1, so.
And within the, it can include land for the R1, but currently prohibits development within the R1. So this article proposes on a very limited scale to entertain development within the R1 and proposes to increase maximum density from 250 units to 300 units. The thought process is there's approximately a 20-acre parcel abutting currently the Edgewood development. It is privately owned. Edgewood, I believe, has completed a purchase of this parcel, and they would like to proceed with dementia-style housing. So they presented a conceptual plan. It was deliberated and discussed with the board several times over the course of November and December. The proposal, as presented, included section off a significant amount of the land, so approximately 15 acres, with a conservation restriction that no further development would be allowed in that parcel of land. And it also would provide the town access to trails that do run across this land and connect to adjoining parcels that, one of which is currently owned by Edgewood and the other is owned by the town of North Andover. So it would create access pretty much along the entire shoreline on the side of the lake.
And what documents have we gotten from the project? Other than we have, says plans that are fairly detailed plans, but.
So we have a conceptual plan, and we also have form letters speaking to the fact that the remaining parcel will be put under conservation restrictions, similar to the conservation restriction they have put on their parcel of land. And that trails, although they may need to be relocated slightly with this development, that the town would have full access, easement access across those trails. So those have been reviewed by our town council and informed, they appear to be suffice. And the article itself has been reviewed.
Was the trail committee told about this?
I believe you discussed it with the trail.
Yeah, there actually is one thing that I want to make sure we get mixed, is that we, we also would like to get trail access over the existing Edgewood parcel, which we don't have yet.
Okay, in the CR, currently, we don't have.
There's a conservation restriction on that property, but there's no access.
Okay, access easement to the town. I don't know if there's any abuttes here. Previously, there's a preschool that abuts this land, that a couple of applicants came in, they inquired as to really what the plan was. They've not contacted me since that meeting, but I did notify them of this public hearing. So I did do a mailing to that parcel.
So I don't know if any of the members of the board, you know, just want to talk a little bit. I know virtually all of us have been out there taking walks and you can understand where the proposed building would be and the benefit of the new open space that we would gain, so I don't know. Laura or Pete, if you guys, I know you both went out there, so if you have any other thoughts or questions or comments about the article.
I think, you know, gaining that space around the lake and conserving it is a terrific opportunity.
Any other questions?
We have, we talked about it.
Is there any comments from the applicant or the landowner? Does anything you said so far? Does anything you said so far?
Bob Capola, Edgewood Retirement Community. I did meet with the folks from the school chain the other day. We toured the site with them and they were very pleased, very happy to see with how we were looking at that development and very happy that we were willing to put that 15 acres plus or minus into, into conservation restriction. And we've also been working with the trustees of the reservation on setting up that restriction. So they've had this since we all met probably back in January and they still have that under review, so we expect certainly to hear from them shortly as to whether they accept that. And if not, then we would do something with the town to make sure that it's restricted. So either way, it will be, the 15 acres will be a restricted piece.
And again, for the public, the next, the warrant article is one thing, but development would still proceed through a cycle and review, special permit with the planning board.
Yeah. And you don't have a problem about giving us the easement rights over the existing CR part of the property?
No, we wouldn't, we wouldn't have any issue with that. I thought that it might have already existed, but if not, we will, we will address that and we will take care of that. That's not an issue. Because there is signage already on both ends of that, that folks access, access right through the property.
I thought there was.
Yeah, there is signage on, on both sides.
Mr. Hestrom?
Just wanted to information, we're, we're looking at all of the existing easements that cross that area and we're going to report to Edgewood, we'll report to the, to the planning board. I believe the town has rights in parts of the Edgewood campus because of the historic easements like this. So it's a fairly complicated land mass, as you know, and there are lots of cross easements. We just want to sort of fine tune what's there.
That's fair enough. I mean, you know, from our, from a public policy perspective, the one thing that we want to ensure is that if you're walking from the trustee's land, that you can walk someplace through the Edgewood land or to the North Andover land, you know, both this new property and also the existing Edgewood land. And as long as we have a process for getting to that, we're, we're fine. And the trails committee I know would be more than willing to work with you on the specifics of that, so.
They, they did put up a new sign, the Joyce's Trail sign, last fall. The trails committee did, they came in and they put that up.
Okay.
Yep.
Good. So, I think if there's no sort of further questions, I think if we're willing to make a recommendation for favorable action for this article, if somebody wants to make that motion.
I'll make a motion to vote favorable action on Article 10 for the Continuing Care Retirement Center.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
So the next one is Article 11, which is a amendment to the Carter Development District. And if, Jean, if on this one you can explain the context of what we were trying to do and the symmetry of what we were trying to achieve here.
So again, this was first brought to us by a proponent to add back landscaping into the Carter Development District. Previously, prior to 2008, this was an industrial zone area. It allowed for landscaping and contracting type businesses. When the CDD three was put in, that use had been eliminated. Currently, there's, I believe, three operating landscaping businesses and applicant had purchased another property with the intent to open a landscaping business, subsequently found out that the use currently is not allowed. The, again, it was deliberated over the months of December and January, a couple of alternatives were presented, one of which the board deemed more in favor of was to allow this use by special permit, which would allow some oversight, outdoor storage and screening and other components. So that is how the article is being presented. But there was one additional change since we've last met. Currently, there's a few properties that are being marketed across the street and we've had inquiries related to light manufacturing component. So the warrant article was being legally noticed within a few days of these conversations. So I did include as a permitted use, light manufacturing again in the language, so I definitely want to point that out to you. It, a lot of the buildings, the design of which just seems to lend themselves to a light manufacturing type component. We're having several inquiries as to that use recently. Again, it was allowed when it was an industrial zone, it was excluded once it went to CDD three. Manufacturing type operations today have changed somewhat and they seem to be a lot more technical computer type based operations. I just didn't see the harm and internally, we've had some conversations about this within community development, so I have added it. These businesses type to bring jobs and whatnot to the area, but it's definitely up for discussion tonight. So it was noticed to include it in the event that you opted to include it.
Okay, okay. Let's separate the two things a little bit, because I think the one thing that we've already talked about, you know, we've, we've made a conscious decision and then maybe talk about the manufacturing a little bit and, yeah, I'm not, the manufacturing one, I hadn't really even thought about it, so it's a little bit more of just not, haven't heard about it, I don't, I don't know. I feel like I'm, given that that's the case, I'm not ready to make a decision tonight, but, you know, so we ought to probably just start to talk about it. I mean, what do people think?
Well, I guess what I don't understand is why it wouldn't be subject to a special permit if we're making the other one subject to a special permit.
My reasoning was there's really no outside component to this. It's an internal operation, they exist today internally. The, the buildings that are coming up, actually on the market right now, they just lend themselves to that type of use, to be honest. It's not something that I would foresee being a retail operation with storefronts and things like that.
What are, what's an example, maybe, that you're hearing?
An example currently that has requested a waiver of cycle and review is at the corner of Bradford Street and, this is Bradford, I always set up, and 125, so it's the very last property on the right before you enter Haverhill. There was, it's been light manufacturing for decades. It is currently on the market to be leased. A resident of North Andover wants to open a light manufacturing type use in that building. In that case, I'm told the use is grandfathered, it's been operating that, it has not been abandoned, and he'll be able to go into that. In a similar case across the street, the business is actually relocating their office component to the mills and that building is coming up on the market. And again, it's, we're getting inquiries about light manufacturing for that building.
Is this our standard definition of light manufacturing that we've always used?
We don't define light manufacturing in the bylaw, but yes, I would say it's consistent with the light manufacturing that was being.
I mean, did you, where did you pick this up?
Oh, that's within the industrial zone currently, it's in IS, I believe, I two.
Okay.
It's, it's within other sections, but they're mostly industrial sections, which this had been in the past. It's, it's strictly taken right other, right out of the bylaw with.
That's what I was wondering, because I mean, to some degree, when you look at it by itself, it's kind of like, it's manufacturing, except if it's obnoxious.
We don't define the difference between manufacturing and light manufacturing. And to be honest, the I two parcel allows manufacturing, but I don't know how they differentiate between light and manufacturing.
Well, I think there's two parts of it. Light manufacturing, because it's in the CDD three, it's going to be a very small use because, don't forget, they can't use much water because they don't have sewer. So that's going to lend itself to the number of people, the number of what type of manufacturing is, just because they don't have sewer lines, so, you know, so that's going to be part of it, too.
Well, I mean, even if they did, the scale of it would be fairly small.
Right, yeah.
You're not going to.
And the building's footprints are fairly small. I think we're talking a 30,000 square foot footprint for one of those buildings.
Yeah, but I mean, there's, there's not like, you know, across the street, there's a huge amount of land, there's not a huge amount of land there, so, you know.
I'm sorry to, like, just spring it on you, but the opportunity was there and I, we've had a lot of activity on, and three buildings across the way in terms of inquiries.
When you say across the way, what do you mean?
In the CDD district.
Across from their offices.
Across from, yeah.
Oh, whoa, whoa, whoa.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, yes, it's possible landing.
Okay, now I understand what across the way means. I was having a hard time.
So I look out my window at these buildings all day. There's, there's been inquiries on several of these buildings within the last.
How many? I mean, it would be helpful, again, I think, if we knew how many of the buildings have historically been used for that function, I mean, and or are currently being used for that function, because it would be a grandfathered use.
Okay, so the one that I referred to, I think it's called Beachwood Road, which is this little cul-de-sac right in the middle there. There's two buildings in those upper two parcels, one of you, one of which has had a cycle and review and it was dedicated use of 10% manufacturing, 10% office and 10% something else. So up to 30,000 square feet, it was carved out, three different uses, 10,000 square feet each. The parcel that I first described, it was empty and that was all manufacturing. Microwave Engineering is right about in the middle of here, so roughly in here, and I believe they have a light manufacturing component within that building.
Do you go down a little more? Can you go down? Yeah, it's a.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, it's right here.
Two lots of white brush.
Yeah.
Love it.
That's the one.
The white brush is, it's too hot, bother. Not that person, nice one.
So.
So.
As far as other buildings, there's one at the end of Holt Road that was in, I don't believe you were here that night, that was the former Microwave Engineering building that since has a very small office component. They may be coming back in, so we've had inquiries for landscaping there, we've had inquiries for office type use. And there's one other use, oh, mini storage type use in that building.
Yeah.
Office is allowed by right, landscaping was continued upon, yes. But again, it's a, it's a property that, if it's still on the market, I think people have participants' sale type agreements submitted, but if it's still available, it's another building that's coming up or has come up recently.
Any other sort of thoughts on the board? I, I, I feel like you need to do a little bit more work that would, before we make a determination there. I just, you know, because we, we haven't really talked about it before, so.
We're moving further away from the residential hope for some of the things that we're going to be in the US, but.
Well, the, I mean, the stuff, no, it's, it's more the residential's the other side in the Osborne, which would drag, you know, maybe more retail and commercial uses than manufacturing and industrial, but, you know. That's what we're in, this dynamic transition period, you know.
Yeah.
And, I, I, I mean, Jean, like, one of the things is also, how many of the properties, for example, that might be in play have existing buildings there as opposed to start from scratch additional sort of thing? It's just kind of understanding what we're, we're dealing with here, I think.
How many of the parcels have existed?
Yeah, in other words, if, if, if you did this conceivably, would you, you know, it'd be one thing if you tore a building down and rebuilt it, but are we talking about very many parcels from scratch that, where you could put this use on that's not there today? I think it'd just be good to know. I mean, not that it would make our decision any different, but it's, it's known, all the facts and circumstances.
Okay. I, I, I think I know of three parcels today that do not have structures on them.
So, yeah, so. If there's no other comments from the board, do we have any comments from the audience on this article?
I actually have a quick.
If you could identify yourself for the record, it might be easier if you can go up to here, so you can, everybody can see you on TV.
Thanks, I'm used to it. Anna McDevitt, 266 Barker Street, could you bring up the?
I'm trying, it looks like I just lost my connection.
I, I guess my question was, in the section that is a CDD three, if I'm saying that correctly, one of the parcels that was there was the neighborhood that you just put in for Stanton Way, which is a residential neighborhood? And I'm just wondering why that wasn't reclassified to be residential? You just put in.
Well, I, I think the, the answer is that wherever Stanton Way is, and we'd have to get the map back, Stanton Way is own residential, it's not part of the CDD three. If, if the map showed it that way, it's, it's an error, because it shouldn't be. It was, it is own residential, right? Stanton Way is own residential.
If you pull, if you look right there, exactly where that street is coming in, where the CDD three is.
Yeah.
That's Stanton Woods.
So then there's something wrong there.
Yeah.
So. So part of the street you're saying is entering.
Well, the street enters off.
I think part of what we have listed here is CDD three is not, it's, CDD three is smaller than what's here.
Yep, so, so in that upper corner, kind of coming diagonally down, is Bradford Street? And you can kind of see the access point?
Right, you can see, you can see, yeah, the road, you're right, yeah. I think that's, yeah, I think we may have to just redraw the map, I think it's an error in that.
Yeah, I, I guess my.
I'm sorry?
You guys are older, ma'am.
Yeah, it's not, because Stanton Way is not CDD three, it's, it's, it's R two.
I, I think I would just recommend that before we vote on this at town meeting, that the correct map.
That would be wise, yes.
Because I, I can tell you, I mean, as a somewhat neighbor of this, to see neighbors' homes listed as CD three, CDD three, sorry, I'm saying that wrong. I mean, they're six, seven, $800,000 homes that are technically in this.
Yeah, I will check it.
Okay.
I definitely didn't notice that.
No, that would be great, thank you.
I definitely will check.
Thank you for a good catch, though.
Yeah, it's a good catch.
Do you happen to know whether that, that road that comes out going towards CDD three, is that actually a road?
It is a road, yeah.
And are there, are there houses on either side of the road?
Yes, that's the subdivision.
So, in between Haverhill and Box.
That's an actual town corridor. Right, that's the town line.
Yeah, that may. Yeah, but other than that, that's basically Bradford Street.
Yeah. The, the town, official town map has it correct.
Okay, great.
But I did include a map in the warrant article and I want to make sure that that is correct.
It's incorrect in the warrant article.
It is incorrect, you're right.
Which has gone to print.
Okay.
Thank you.
We will fix it.
Okay, any others?
There is a reference to light manufacturing in the bylaws. It's in a different part of the bylaws, but we've asked about it and it's in Industrial One District and Industrial Two District. And it, it says light manufacturing, including manufacturing, fabrication, processing, finishing, assembly, packing and treatment of articles of merchandise provided, conducted solely within a building, provided further that uses are not offensive, noxious, detrimental, dangerous.
And that's the same language, so I copied from that to this.
Yeah, right, yeah. Okay, good. Any other questions, comments, inputs from the public? Okay, well, we're going to hold this open, we're not going to vote this, because we have to clean up a few things, so, thank you.
But I think there.
Can you discuss the other portion if there's any concerns?
Yeah, but the second part, there, there are people here on the contractor's yard.
Oh, the contractor's yard, yeah, I mean, we can talk about that. I mean, from our perspective, I think, we think it makes sense and we'd be willing to entertain that.
Yeah.
So I think that's, that's consensus of, of the board.
So consensus is at the next meeting, they're going to vote on that, but their consensus is favorable action at this point, but not voting yet.
So I just have one chat model of 16th and 17th Street. The part we just talked about right now is for the manufacturing, but as far as the rest of it, you're not going to change. You're just talking about the manufacturing.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
Do you know when your next meeting is, or is it going to be before town?
April 19.
Oh, April 19.
And then there's one May third, I hope, before town.
Yeah, great, thank you. Okay, so we are through 10 and 11. Let us do now, we're going into a series of discussions. And let's see, I mean, we're going to have a, a meeting discussion on 16. Is the discussion on 12, four, and five, are they going to take very long?
No. So four and five, you should have a planning board report, those are just.
Let's just do those real quickly, so we can get them out of the way. Are there any actual, I, it's a pro forma one, but are there actually any easements that we're going to grant or to be granted? I could be these ones that we're just talking about here.
No, they're just authorization to grant them or to accept them, nothing specific that I'm aware of.
Okay, so they're just the regular, it's the same boilerplate language they have in there every year, so. So, anybody have any questions about that? Because I think that's pretty. I think that's pretty straightforward. Would somebody like to make a motion on recommend favorable action on Article 4?
So move.
Okay, anybody want to make a second? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, how about Article 5?
So move.
Second?
What's to grant and what's to accept? I'm sorry.
So, motion made and second, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, okay, and is Hitching Post going to be quick, or is it going to?
Very quick, again, this was part of a stipulated land court agreement that the board had approved. DPW Conservation and Health have all submitted favorable recommendations, as well as town council. Again, it's being heard at the street layout meeting April 19, so the board of selectmen would appreciate your recommendation, either favorable or unfavorable, but there's.
There's nothing to worry about.
There's nothing to worry about, right.
I'll make a motion to propose favorable action on Hitching Post Road, which is Article 12.
I have to recuse myself.
Yeah, okay, so, yeah.
Second, four of them.
Yeah, may, I have the record show that David's not voting on this, he's recused himself. Motion made and second, and to recommend favorable action on Article 12. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. Now we're back to 16. So, Jane, can you give us the background on this?
Yes, so Article 16 is a citizen petition, petition for a zoning change relative to by law Section 4127, which is the Business 2 zoning district. It proposes to modify language for a allowed use of multifamily dwellings and townhouses. Currently, it's an allowed use with a special permit by the zoning board of appeals. The proposal is to revise that to be with special permit by the planning board. In addition, there is a proposal within Section 7 for building heights. This is a dimensional requirement. What is being proposed is adding a subparagraph 6, which would allow a waiver of the maximum height provided under Table 2, which is the dimensional requirement table, granted by the planning board as a special permit granting authority. And again, it gives some conditions that the act of the planning board has made a determination based on consideration of size, design, neighborhood context, topography, and/or other circumstances that such a waiver shall not be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than existing conditions. So it's two separate sections within the bylaw, called out within the same.
Can you, I have one question before we start. Can you tell me, what is the allowed density for multifamily in this district? In other words, it's allowed use, but what's the density that's allowed? I just don't remember.
There isn't a density within the B2, but there's like floor area ratio within the table.
Okay.
Is that what, I have the zoning table.
So, the two things that, just to set the table on this, that are being proposed changes, to change the special permit granting authority, in this case, to the planning board from the ZBI, and then it's to change the building heights.
So, within B2, the floor area ratio is .75 to 1, if you were getting at that type of context?
Okay. What I'd like to do is to put this, you know, as we started this, because we clearly have somebody that's proposing a specific project here, we're changing zoning, but we have to see zoning in the context of the property that the change is being proposed for, because the two things tie together. So, what we want to do is, we want to see the proposal from the applicant here that lays out exactly what they're proposing to do, and I think it's actually important that we see this, not just members of the board, but there's obviously a lot of people here are very interested in this, is to understand and see what is being proposed, and why it requires the changing of the zoning that's contemplated here. So, we're looking at the thing from two dimensions, so we'd like to understand from the applicant what it is that they're talking about, and then we'll layer the zoning on top of that. So with that as a background, Mr. Smolak, the floor is yours, if you could identify yourself for the record and.
Yes, for the record, John Smolak, the actual article petitioner here, is Chris Huntress, Huntress and Associates. We have other members of the project team to discuss, as we said, at a later time DP. But, you know, this is a process that's not undertaken in the normal course of the zoning process, simply because of the fact that an agreement has been made with respect, a purchase agreement has been entered into, with respect to the property at 1210 Osgood Street, and as a result, that occurred maybe two weeks ago. And so, it was pretty clear the type of relief that we needed to obtain. Ordinarily, we would come before the board before we file the warrant article, and at that time, obtain the board's favorable recommendation, we're so inclined to do so, but we didn't have that time to do that. So, we're in a situation where what we want to do is sort of explain the context within which we're requesting this proposed rezoning, and then talk a little bit about the property, and I think that, based on that discussion, you'll see the context as to why we're asking for this request. And, as has been indicated, there are two components of the proposed rezoning, one of which is including the special permit as a special permit granting authority for multifamily and townhomes within the B2 zoning district. This use is already allowed in the B2 zoning district anyway, but what we'd like to do is sort of, is in the spirit of trying to consolidate permitting for this project, what we'd like to combine is a multifamily or townhouse special permit with site plan review, because we feel the planning board is a natural board that would review both aspects of this proposal, which would be mixed-use development. And so, in terms of one-stop shopping, I think that's what we've heard from this town, that we'd like to start to try to streamline the process, but not sacrificing the detail of review. Similar to the situation that we had last year with the rezoning with West Mill, albeit that was a much more complex situation, basically that was designed as a sort of consolidation, streamlining of the property process. And so, in addition to that, the second component is a provision within zoning bylaws, within the definitions of height under Section 7.4, which under certain circumstances, based on unique, specific circumstances of a site, would enable the planning board as a special permit granting authority to waiver alter the 35-foot height limitation. And there are reasons that we're asking for that waiver, and I think you'll see, based on our discussion of the site, why that would be important in the context of this proposal. So those are basically the components of the rezoning. As you may recall, back in 2001, John, I think you were the only member of the board who was there at the time, and Chris was the only, was part of the project team at that time, back in 2001. The site was approved for the redevelopment of primarily a commercial site, Entecott Village, which was 160,000 square feet of mixed retail and office use, along with another 54,000 square feet of hotel, it was a 102-room hotel, which had a height of about 60 feet. And so that was approved back in 2001, but because of the fact that Booson at that time departed and decided to consolidate and move operations out of North Andover, that project sort of fell by the wayside. And so this site has been sitting there for approximately 15 years, with very little activity. I mean, there have been a lot of bites on this property, but nothing that was significant enough to make the current owners decide to sell the property. But in the context of this proposal, what's going on here is that there is a prospective purchaser of a portion of the property, and the existing owners are going to retain another four acres of the approximately 14-acre site, so that what we're looking to do is create a mixed-use redevelopment of the property, which will include some residential, but also include a retail, commercial component, and we feel that we can make that mix work fairly well. But we haven't defined that project yet, because we really want the board's input as to the direction that we're heading, and then maybe we can come back with a little more detail. But we wanted to sort of engage the board and determine whether they feel, as we do, that this is the right direction in which to go. So, with that background, what I want to do is have Chris Huntress just walk you through some of the slides that you have here to discuss the.
Can you first, just to sort of get the context right, I mean, I think probably everybody that's in the room here knows exactly where it is, but for people watching on TV, they may not know exactly where it is. So if you can just explain where it is and, you know, put it in context.
Sure, the site is the old Fidgeta Farm property, which is 13.7 acres in size, was part of the former Fidgeta Farm and nursery until 2001. And the site is on Osgood Street, 125, between what is now the Haikido, or the old Beijing Restaurant, and on one end, and on the other end is the Fidgeta Florist shop, on the sort of the right-hand side, if you're looking at the diagram. Across the street is the site of the former McClays Forest, which is a mixed commercial use. Also across the street is the Barker Farm, as well as Barker Street. So that's the context in terms of the surrounding property.
Now, what about the land in back of it? It almost looks like there's a lot more open space behind it that you would intuitively think would be part of the same parcel.
Yeah, that's part of the airport, Lawrence Airport property. And beyond that, on the left side to the rear is the old Wardy Chemical Plant that was there years ago, and it's traded again.
So, is there no developable land behind this property, or is it all?
I believe it's all owned by the Lawrence Airport, the rear of the site. And plus, it's, there's other expansive levels to that rear of the property as well. So the site is really constrained in this particular envelope.
Is that the end of the runway? The pavement visible?
It is. It's one of the turnarounds, I think.
That's the primary runway?
I don't know that, but it is the end of one of the runways.
That would be itself an issue, you know? We ran into that, what was it, when the?
Dunkin' Donuts.
The Dunkin' Donuts, yeah.
Especially what you're talking about, huh? Yeah, totally different area, I mean, we've had discussions with the airport manager, and also checked things on a preliminary basis with FAA. I mean, not that we would go that high, but I mean, the height limitation there would be 92 feet, or 90 feet or so, but we're not even close to that, to that height in terms of this proposal. And keep in mind, back when the hotel was proposed back in 2001, it was approximately 60 feet in height, that was approved, cleared through the FAA, and what was the Mass Aeronautics Commission, it's now the Mass DOT Aviation Division, had approved that at that time. So there's existing water and sewer off of Osgood Street, the raised pond pump station serves the site. That pump station is now being upgraded, just sort of giving you some background in terms of utilities. And that option wasn't available back in 2001, but now it is. So all utilities are right there. So, any other background?
Okay, no, I think that's fine.
Okay. Chris?
Sure, thanks, John. As John said, my name's Chris Huntress, I'm with Huntress Associates, we're landscape architects and planners from Andover. We worked on the site back in 2001, as John had also said, and that, at that time, just to recap, 200-plus thousand square feet of development, which included mixed use closer to the street, and multi-story retail with business and office above, and a hotel out in the back. A lot of the things that we talked about with the board back at that time were shared parking, off-peak parking, and height restrictions, and height issues as it relates to this site. What I'm going to do is take you through, we're very early in this process, so if you're looking for a final site plan tonight, you're not going to see it. What you're going to see is a study that we've been working on with Joel Grass's office and Hancock Associates. It really helps us understand some of the cross-sections of the site, because even though I've worked on it before, it's been 15, 16 years now, so it's been a while. But we've got a whole new project team, new ownership, and new engineers and architects working on it as well. So, in overview, you've got 14 acres of land, predominantly upland, there are a couple small wetland areas, and I'll show you where those are. You've got over 1,000 feet of roadway frontage on Route 125, or Osgood Street. And what you see in the image here is, in red, obviously, is the property boundaries that are highlighted. So, as you look up and down Osgood Street, particularly on the southern end of the site, further away from Havil, which is where this picture is, you're reasonably close to grade along the frontage of the street. There's good site distance at this location, approximately across from Barker Farm Road, or, I'm sorry, Barker Street. And then looking down south towards Beijing, again, kind of right in that existing turnaround. And backing up and looking across the street, and starting to look kind of at a broader perspective of the site, you do see, again, that plateau, kind of which is on the southern front portion, and then on the back, I'm sorry, as you move towards the north, there begins to rise. As you look into the site, off to the right-hand side, the land begins to fall away, falls away about 10 feet at first, and then more quickly as you get into the site. This is standing in the back of the site, and looking forward, you can see the flower shop, John, remind me the name of the flower shop across the street there.
It's the former McClays.
McClays, across the street, and you can see the grade change. I mean, you know, we're probably 20 feet below the elevation of the roadway of Osgood Street from this photo. And looking up towards that plateau, you can see, you know, the grade change as well. The, and again, looking from the back, you can see the airport property, which kind of landlocks the back portion, and some wetland systems back there as well. What I'm going to do now is going to take you through a layering approach that we do when we look at any large site like this. And first thing we do is identify, you know, major roads, neighborhoods, areas, and then we draw property lines in. The 14 acres, again, defined by red in the boundary, and the purple lines are the airport property lines and other adjacent property lines. Next, we lay on topography. These happen to be 3-meter, or about 9 feet, 10 foot topo, so although it may not look like a lot of lines, each time we move across one of those lines, it's a 10-foot change in grade. And just to kind of document what some of that is, it might be a little hard to read here, but the elevations from the survey show, in Osgood Street, we're about elevation 165. As we move back to that first yellow line, we're about elevation 150, 140, 135, and 130. So there's about a 35-foot or greater grade change as you work your way towards the back of that site. In cross-section, this would be a standard cross-section, with Osgood Street being on the left, and the back of the site towards the airport being on the right-hand side. And you can see, again, it's that similar plateau up along the front, where the first, about 150 feet of depth stays reasonably close to the roadway elevation, plus or minus less than 10 feet. And then once you get back beyond that 200-foot, it drops down significantly. And what we've shown on this was an elevation of the 35-foot height restriction from the street, as it would relate if you just took that at a constant elevation across the back, and you can see the elevations would be 70 feet, 62 feet, 55 feet, kind of across the back as you go through. Understanding that, not only the land use, but some of the other aspects, one thing I didn't point out with the small wetlands, my laser pointer's not working on your screen, but you'll see on the left-hand side of the property, the area in yellow, you'll see two small green shapes, those are flagged wetlands, and those are the only two resource areas that are on the site. So the site lays itself out well for kind of a mixed-use campus across the front, and more higher-density residential across the back, for a couple of reasons. One is, it takes the residential a little bit further off of Osgood Street to a private setting, but it also brings that kind of mixed-use opportunity in campus or village across the frontage of the site as well. Another alternative would be, if we were to move the retail development closer down to Barker Road, to Barker Street, and move the residential slightly north. Both of these scenarios show approximately 10 acres of residential development, which would accommodate, you know, in a high-density scheme, somewhere in the range of 160 to 190 units. And mixed-use development of four acres, again, under either scheme, at about 10,000 square feet an acre, is 30,000 to 40,000 square feet of retail and mixed-use development, which. which is consistent with retail development along the corridor. The character of the development, I'm going to take you through some of this. We've worked on this with Mark Yanowitz over at Joel Grass's office, and he's, is Mark here? Mark's here. So I'm going to take you through it. If there are more detailed questions, he can certainly jump in. But as we start talking about kind of what we call the mixed-use village up along the street, we started talking about very traditional architecture, looking at second stories that provide kind of the massing and kind of bringing some of that building and structure up to the roadway. You want, if we do single-story here, which is a possibility, but you need to provide some character and some roof lines, we think, to be able to really give it the sense of place that it needs. So more traditional-style architecture across the frontage, we think, is important. Things, other things to consider in the design would be incorporating landscape into the design of any kind of mixed-use project, providing outdoor gathering spaces and creating pedestrian connections. Those are all important as we start to talk about how these mixed-use retail-commercial projects really need to evolve. Articulated roof lines and building forms and variations in scale are all important. Nothing that you see in these pictures would be of the scale and size necessarily of what we're talking about, at least on these shots at the site. But again, it's that kind of articulation of roofline and the varying elements that make it a little bit more interesting, bring that form up to the street. As we start to talk about the residential out back, we're talking about larger buildings in scale, but again, they're dropping down that grade. These would be at the same roofline elevation to the buildings in the front, but would allow a little bit more size and mass to the back. Some of the things that are important as we start talking about the connection of this residential to the mixed-use village would be incorporating, again, landscape into the design and open space, providing variations in the roofline, using balconies and entry features to create interest, and again, creating those pedestrian connections that make this one development that's part of the mixed-use village up front and the residential village to the rear. So in general, that's the, kind of the case study that we're at to this point, and I'd be happy to take any questions and go back over any of the images that we showed.
And just to add as well, in terms of process, if Tomany was to approve these zoning amendments, what we would be doing is filing concurrent applications for both the commercial and the residential so that they can fit into the context of one another, so that we're reviewing it as one complete design, although there'll be two separate owners. And in terms of the residential component, that would be proposed by Princeton Properties, which is a very reputable residential development firm, has many units that they've developed themselves very strong and again, very reputable. And Andrew Chaven is the CEO of Princeton Properties, and Jeff Brown is the general counsel here this evening. But they would be part of the development group that would be in here redeveloping this parcel. And again, the use, the residential component is already allowed under a B2 zoning district. So what we're looking to do is trying to consolidate that review.
Okay.
And now we can see the reason why we're looking for a provision that allows for an adjustment or waiver of height, you know, specifically based on the way the topography of that site really dips down. And so...
Well, you, it's because you want to build at least a three-story building, right? I mean, if I look at those, that's...
Possibly, possibly four. Most likely four, which would still be lower in height than what was approved back in 2001. So...
Yeah, the hotel from the 2001 plan, I want to say it was a five-story hotel, about 60 feet plus.
Right. And so what we're looking at is, you know, on the commercial component, we're looking at a high-end sort of retail component, primarily retail component. And then also with the residential, the market rate residential, one bedroom, two bedroom, maybe one-third of the units, one bedroom, two-thirds of the units, two bedrooms.
Well, I think the biggest thing is the commercial residential as on the scheme of things is low. So I think really they might want to have Princeton speak a little bit to why they want the height waiver on design, you know, why it makes sense for the site.
Yeah, and I think implicit in that is the density, because obviously you're building higher to get more density and...
Vertically opposed to land use, you know?
Yeah.
So they're prepared to do that.
Well, also to create more open space.
Right, to create, create more, yeah.
To create that access.
Who's going to own the commercial part?
That'll be the current existing owners.
The Fajetta family?
Fajetta Development. And they have a good experience with commercial property as well. So they already have some very strong addressed and a couple of tenants.
So Lawrence interpreted that to be the Fajetta family? Is the Fajetta Development...
No, 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 I'm sorry.
Oh, it's not the same people?
No, you just...
No, it's not.
That's the owners...
Robert Boland and Lilian Montalto own Fajetta Development. Bill Barrett, back in 2001, used to be part of that process, but this has been brought up.
Okay. I thought it was the family.
So...
So if, yeah, if you could, that would be good to... Thank you, we appreciate you coming today.
Good evening, members of the board. For the record, Andrew Chaven, have the pleasure of operating Princeton Properties since December of 1992, and a resident of the town of Andover, so I'm down the street. We have developed similar properties to what John and Chris described recently in Chelmsford, in Bilreka, and our most recent one is in the town of Westford. We would hope that as we move the process along, that we might engage the members of the board to come on a bit of a tour with us. It's relatively local, and I think it's one thing to see pictures, it's another thing to hear words, but I think the most important thing is to see it in practice and see these buildings that are actually constructed, so that you can see it in real time. The Westford project is in 16 Littleton Road, that's the most recent, and those are four-story buildings, 10 units to a floor, double-loaded corridors, so five on either side. And they sort of are the building blocks of what we've used to try and think about how this site ultimately gets planned. As John said, the reason that we like the site and the mixed-use aspect of this is that the grade really does fall off to the real advantage of the ability to put a four-story building there, but only have the same rooflines, as Chris pointed out, to the commercial on the front. So you're not going to be seeing these, you know, large-scale buildings with significant height from the street front, you're really going to see everything at the same roofline. And I think Chris has done a really good job of helping us realize what the site's potential is and how we can fit the buildings that we really like to develop into the site the right way and in a responsible way. So that's really the thought John laid out, that we're looking at one bedrooms and two bedrooms only. We're not looking at developing three-bedroom apartments here. Not sure that the site characteristics necessarily lay out that way. We see this as really being an opportunity to get to the roadway networks, be able to use the retail not only out front, but the existing retail that's already on Route 125. We like the fact that Osgood Street has very significant capacity. I've lived around here long enough to remember when Lucent was there, and when there was even significantly more traffic on that roadway than there is today. So we think it's a responsible use for the property. We like it a great deal. I've known Lilian Montalto for some time and sort of comfortable with the fact that she would be a very responsible owner for the front piece. And so we feel comfortable being in what I'll call a non-partnership, a joint venture, if you will, on the site. And we feel, we feel comfortable that they would be good potential partners for us as we move through the development piece.
And what's your target market, if I may ask, just a little bit more context?
Target market of potential renters?
Yeah.
Well, I guess the old saying is that in multifamily, you look for the newlyweds and the nearly deads. And I think that's, it's an old adage, but it's an old adage for a reason, Mr. Chairman. I mean, I think that to a great extent, you're looking at folks who want access to the community when they're younger and they're saving for a deposit on a house. You're looking at people who are coming out of houses who want to stay in the community. And I think those are the two primary areas that we're looking for. I mean, I think it's no secret that North Andover is a popular address. I think people would like access to the community. And so we find often that people come here, they get comfortable with the town, they become the feeder stock, if you will, to buy the single-family home stock that exists here today. And then those folks who are, who own those single-family homes, who are looking to stay in town, have an opportunity to do that where there's little of that housing, if you will, that's been built over time or hasn't been turned into condominiums.
Would there be a 40B requirement on this, right?
No, 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 we're proposing strictly market rate. We are absolutely, positively not talking about 40B. This is an allowed use under the existing zone.
I'd say similar to West Mill, the residential units there, it's a summer use by special permit.
We'll definitely take questions, but if we could just go around with the board first, we'll answer every question anybody has, we'll get through.
You know, just a thought is that this, having a mixed-use development going further north on 125 could only be beneficial to extending that into the Osgood project. You know, it's, you're beginning to have that type of thing going north.
Yeah.
Where if you had to start it in Osgood, you know, you're putting it right next to Havre line, but it's quite a distance.
All right. Any questions before we... Pete? Jane, do you have any questions? Rebecca?
Just looking at the airport, though, is there any concerns with the noise from the airport? It's not switching it around. I know the mixed-use makes more sense to have on the roadway for us. I was just looking at, now I'm seeing the map with the airport.
Sure. We certainly considered that. I think to answer an earlier question that was brought up, is that the runway? That's actually the turn where the airplane's taxi before they, before they make that U-turn to take off.
Yeah, and that's where they rev up the engine.
Well, it's where they'll ultimately turn. I think they'll rev up the engine once they get parallel, so I think they'll be, you know, we've looked at that, and it's, you know, many football fields, if you will, away.
Okay.
We're going to have to design the site and the windows with that in mind, but we're going into that knowing what our neighborhood will be.
Yeah.
We'll certainly entertain questions. What I'd ask everybody to do is to stand up and identify themselves and where they're from, and then they ask their question, we'll get an answer. So the gentleman that is standing up first, we'll defer to you, if you want to go first.
Sure. Josh Stacy, 90 Old Farm Road. If you look at that, it's the bottom right, right off the screen, it's the neighborhood directly across from the site we're talking about here. So you had mentioned traffic. I knew you guys a bit early on in the process. Have you done any type of traffic analysis, both during the construction phase as well as once everything is in place? During the heavy traffic times, it's pretty difficult to get in and out of that road right now, so I was just wondering if you guys have done any.
Well, we haven't undertaken any traffic analysis yet. We're still looking at existing data that's been collected. We understand that that could be a pinch point when you're coming out of Barker Street and Old Farm Road.
Right.
And so as part of the, if we get beyond the zoning process and we enter the curbing process, we would certainly prepare a traffic study that would be peer-reviewed by the board as well, by the board's peer-reviewed engineer. So we're at a very early stage, and that's a good question, but it's really a site planning review question, and it's something that would be dealt with certainly addressed.
John, do you mind if I, do you mind if I add to that as well? We did speak with Jeff Dirk with Van Ness Associates, who's part of the project team as we started this overview. Some of the things that he helped us understand on both of these scenarios are where the most appropriate locations for curb cuts should be, how many curb cuts we should consider. And one of our goals is to minimize the amount of curb cuts, quite frankly, on this project, and try and make sure that the curb cuts serve both the residential and mixed-use, provide two means of egress and for emergency purposes for both. But not to, it's 1,000 feet of frontage, so we want to make sure that we don't spread those curb cuts out and have five or six curb cuts along the frontage. It's very important that we minimize those. So that's part of the early planning process anyways.
I have a question about the zoning process. Besides this property, what other properties would be affected by this amendment?
Well, the height is town-wide. It's not specific to...
So it would change everything?
Well, yeah, that's part of the broader context we have to worry about, whether we want to do it for everything as opposed to this, because we're having a discussion about this parcel and how the change applies to that, but you're right, we have to address the other issue.
Right, like you can't just change it for one's, thinking it's only for their spot.
We may have to, you know, we may, we may choose, when we look at this, to only look at the B2s and adjust it for the B2s. We may, we may want to try a different formulation. There's, you're right, you're right.
Because we're acting like it's only for this.
No, it's for...
But you're talking about town-wide change, that you want us to do within a matter of a month. Like, that's what I don't understand.
No, I mean, we're expecting some feedback with respect to that limitation. We anticipated that the board might want to limit that to a B2 zoning district, which is entirely appropriate, but we wanted to get something at least on the table with this planning board to begin that discussion. And keep in mind, it is entirely within the discretion of the planning board by special permit, so it's not a blanket height waiver. We've included factors that could be considered in connection with that height limitation.
But you would change the process for every project that comes before us, right?
Well, there's, I mean, there, well, there's, I mean, if you look at that provision under section 7.4, there are a lot of different, it's really a poorly-written section on building that.
Well, I think this is very unclear, but I'm just, I'm just trying to boil down what this is specifically. I'm sorry, am I jumping out?
No, 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 it's fine. It's, we're going in, this is a multi-dimensional thing. We're looking at it for three or four dimensions, because one of, in my mind, the, I'm very wary of giving the planning board unlimited discretion on...
Because we're reasonable, but who knows?
Who comes after us? Yeah, exactly. I mean, we're, yeah, we're the utmost of propriety, but you never know who will take our place, so... But the problem is, if you have too much open-ended discretion, it's not a good thing. It really isn't, because where do you draw the line? You, you know, it's one thing to have a little bit of discussion and tweak around the edge, it's another discussion to throw the thing out completely.
Take all the pulls away and just, yeah.
Because the thing I do not want to end up with is like what we have in, you know, Dan's of 114, where you've got that big tall building coming out of the, you know, and it's a 15-story building, and how did we get that? Well, somebody thought it was a good idea.
They didn't have a special permit, right?
Maybe.
No, but your point is well-taken. I mean, there are many things that you could do, as you indicated, you could limit to the B2 zoning district. You could also put a, a sort of a setback limitation where that height could go up from Osgood Street. So there are ways to really fine-tune it, if you want to fine-tune it to this property. I mean, this is a tool that the planning board should have regardless, in my opinion, as part of site design. You don't want to go back and forth with planning boards, any board of appeals or other boards. When you're looking, when you're sort of the primary design review board, you know, my sense is that you want to have the ability to have those tools available.
Well, the problem ends up being is that we don't want to be the BRA, you know, and the Boston Redevelopment Authority could say, well, the zoning limit's 80 feet, but we like 250 feet, just because we think 250 feet is good. I, we really don't want to have that discussion.
I think a balance of powers is a good thing.
What's that?
A balance of powers.
Yeah.
I mean, right? Everybody has some power over something. I don't know.
Yeah, so we, again, but let's, one of the things that this, I think, you know, we have to look at the specific parcel that it'll impact first, but it also, pairing up the reason why they want change with what they're trying to do in the property is actually helpful, because then you can get an example. So I think it's a good process, but you're right, we have to look more broadly than this. Yeah, so, this isn't a public hearing, by the way, this is just...
Oh, this is a discussion.
This is a discussion, yeah.
I'm discussing.
No, it's been a discussion, and one of the reasons why we drafted it fairly broadly at this point is we anticipated that there would be some limitation suggested by the board, but we wanted to stay within the scope of the law and article. So that's, that's why I was drafted for it.
Okay.
So let's hear some more...
Thank you. Andrew McDevitt, again, 266 Barker Street. Just a quick point of reference, I live kind of in the upper right-hand corner of that, so I literally look out my kitchen window... So I literally look out my kitchen window, look across Parker Field, and will be able to see this property. When I bought my home 11 years ago, this property was certainly for sale. I knew that this day was going to, to come at some point where there was going to be some development that's there. If I could ask you to just go, I don't remember your name, I'm sorry.
Chris?
Chris, could you go to the other slide that shows kind of the other view with the elongated commercial on the front? Thank you. If I had to pick, and I know that that isn't the purpose of what is here, I just want to say that I, I do appreciate this rendition and this kind of perspective more than I do the other one. But I do want to talk about a couple of things that I think are very concerning. We're talking about 200 units that are in here. And I would challenge any of you to come out between 7:30 and quarter of 9:00 in the morning and to leave Barker Street and try to take either a right or a left hand onto Osgood Street 125. If you now add an additional 200 homes or apartments or townhouses in there and people trying to get into work and to actually use these businesses, if you think that there's any way you're going to do that without a traffic light there, that is going to have to be an absolute necessity. In looking at kind of the development of, of what these were going to look like and the renditions of what they were, and I know that they're not, you know, exactly what they're going to be, but, you know, just really showcasing what that's going to be, it looked like there was commercial space or retail space, I should say, on the first floor, and then some office space on the second floor. Is that a...
It's fair to say, yeah, it's mixed-use.
Fair to say, okay. I would just like to remind the planning board that the Brad Street School property at, at Main Street, the developer has now come back to the town and requested that the commercial space that is to be utilized there be rezoned or reallocated for residential because they cannot find anybody who is interested in retail space on Main Street. So I just want to point that out. The guy, Mr. Perkins, was here also from Andover, South Andover, as I like to say, but was here saying, you know, that they had done studies and, and all of these people who are saying there really isn't a market for that in North Andover. So what we're now looking at is putting actually more of this in there. So I would just ask that you, you do reach out to the board of selectmen and, and get some information specifically with Mr. Mailer as well with, with how that looks. We're talking about 200 units here, and I'm assuming that these are rentals. These are not townhouses where people would own.
For rent.
For rent, okay. So again, even though we're, we're talking 200 and they're one-bedrooms, I don't think we're, if we're looking at one-bedrooms, but that's a third of them. So we are looking at, at what's at about 60-something or so that would be, you know, single, single person or, or the newlyweds, as, as we called it before. You know, there isn't an impact to our school. But you are then talking about 140 that are two bedrooms and the potential impact for our schools. Our schools are, I'm, I'm the vice chairman of the school committee. We have most of our classes at the elementary level in the 20 to 25, I'm sorry, 25 to 27 range. We are now asking, we're now looking at kind of increasing that even more. They're talking about building one- and two-bedroom units. Can I ask the planning board if they decide as they start this process to, to actually start building three bedrooms? Is there, how does that work? Are you, if you were to approve this, are you only approving these units to be one- and two-bedroom units?
If that's what they propose, that's what we would approve.
And what is the recourse if they change course?
They would have to go back.
They would have to come back.
Have to come back, okay. And I guess the other question that I have, and, and I can't read that exactly, but Mrs. McCherry?
Mrs. McCherry, yeah.
So you, you asked a very important question, I think, and, and when we were looking at what the zoning bylaw changes, it places the responsibility of this and basically granting the waiver process for this with the planning board. That then means unilaterally, the, the rules, as I am interpreting this, the rules do not apply unless you grant permission, and you guys have said...
Well, actually, it's a narrow, let me pull the thing apart because there's, there's two things going on here is there's one thing that, the way the bylaw is set up today in this district is that the residential use is only allowed by a special permit, but it's by the ZBA.
Okay.
So what they have, and that means that the use is not allowed by right in that district unless you get the approval of the, the special permit granting authority. And that permit granting authority has some level of discretion in whether to grant that or not. And what they're proposing is that that right first be shifted to the planning board from the zoning board. So that's one of the changes that they're proposing. The second thing that they're proposing is where we get into this waiver sort of thing, and it exclusively deals with height. And the idea is that instead, if, if there's a heightened variance, if you will, that the planning board, they're planning on giving the planning board complete discretion in every zoning district to waive the height things. And you can see we're not so, we're, we're not particularly sure that's a good idea because it's too open-ended. Because right now, there's a process. If, if there's a height thing, you go to the zoning board and you get variance. And it's very clear-cut rules about whether you grant it or not grant it. And it's two separate boards and, you know, so forth. But they're proposing giving the planning board complete discretion for that. I'm not sure we would want to do that.
And that was my follow-up question, was is that something that the planning board is interested in? In having that discretion, not just for this property, but across North Andover?
And that's part of our deliberation, that's what we have to think about. This is the first we've heard about it. I mean, you, we, this came up in a different context last year, and we, we figured a way around with our discretion because we don't want it to be open-ended. So.
Thank you.
Okay. John, over there?
David Brown, 35 Old Farm Road. I'm the, to the middle, the bottom to the right, right behind what used to be McClay's there. Two houses in, you can almost see my house there. First thing is, I think you're polite about the traffic light. It's terrible, okay? It's, it's, it's bad getting out of there in the morning, and it's not so good at night coming all the way that intersection of Barker Street and 125.
So hardest thing, taking the lefts?
No, left is worse.
Yeah.
Yeah. But the right is not that much better. You know, going to school, taking kids to school in the morning, whatever, and then going to work, it's, it's bad there. And it will get a lot worse with 200 more dwellings coming to the same exact point. So just, I want to add to that record, but I have a question, too. The specific proposal that we discussed here is, is a warrant article for the town meeting, right? That's what this is going to be?
Well, the, the, we're actually, to some degree, Laura raised the main point is we're, by focusing on this parcel, we're actually doing it a little bit backwards. We, you know, technically, this, this, the zoning changes, which are the two, is special permit granting authority and heightened buildings are all that's within the discretion. The reason why we're looking at this parcel is because this parcel triggered the zoning article, so there's a connection between the two.
But the, the, so the, there's a proposed warrant article, right, that addresses these, all these questions? I guess I'm confused.
There's no zoning article that deals with the specifics of this site and what the buildings look like and everything. And the zoning article is solely to deal with two things. Change the special permit granting authority...
To the planning board.
To the planning board, and give the planning board basically waiver discretion over it.
Okay, as opposed to who now has it, which is the zoning board?
No, it's, the first is the zoning board, but the second one is there's a height limit and we can't waive it.
Oh, period, okay.
Period, yeah. I mean, you can go to the zoning board for variance if you want, but the limit's the limit, you know?
All right, so, all right, I think I understand a little bit better now. So what, what these folks are asking, are asking you guys for are, is what?
They're, they're asking if we would support their...
See, if we make those changes, they could build the project they want here. That's really how the two pieces fit together, so.
They can proceed, they don't have permission to bring in the...
Yeah, I mean, they could not make any zoning changes and bring the project forward to, it would be, they would first go to the ZBA to get a special permit, and then they would come back to the planning board for what is called site plan review. And site plan review is we look at the specific development proposal, the height of the buildings, the color, the traffic, and all that. The planning board's jurisdiction is relatively limited. That basically, we can say, we don't like this, we don't like that about the project, but we couldn't, for example, say, the traffic is too heavy, you can't build this. We might say, well, maybe you should cut it down by a certain number of units or move the road a little bit, and, but we can't say, we don't like it, so therefore you can't build it.
Okay.
So, you know, we, we, we focus on the narrow specifics.
And just to further complicate it, and if you remembered, did I ask, is this a 40B?
Right.
Okay, that's provision of Mass General law. A 40B complex says that you have a certain percentage of affordable housing.
Right.
That application is controlled by the ZBA, and we're out of it.
Okay.
And if you've ever driven down 114, you see Berry Street?
Yes.
You see what they did?
Yeah.
That's a 40B.
But the question is, why, why, why is this before us?
Yeah, that's where I'm...
This is there, this is, John Smolak has found this. And I guess it's asking if we would support it.
But the requirement is the planning board for a zoning article, the planning board has to hold a public hearing. Again, that is being noticed now.
We're, we're, given the complexity of this, how late this is, normally, we would have an applicant come for these things three, four, or five months before, so we would be getting a better understanding of it. And we would be able to do research and think about it a little bit because the timing is a little bit briefer. We're tying a bunch of things together all at once, and it makes for a little bit more messy product, but I don't think there's any other way to do it.
All right, I appreciate that. I'm in the information gathering mode, obviously, so that when these things come to decision points, I can speak more intelligently about it.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, good. Sir?
Hey, how are you? I'm Mark Kylie, 119 Hickory Hill, so just a little bit down Barker, take a right. Question, has the state already given us the pass on 40B?
It's not a 40B.
I understand that, but don't you have to buy to not have 40B?
No, no. Basically, the way it works is that if you don't have 10% of your housing in town designated as affordable housing, the developer can come in with a project that doesn't comply with zoning to build affordable housing. And so, but you, you don't have to, you, in this case, they're not applying under 40B because it's market-rate housing.
Right. Secondly, how long does something like this take to build? Like, how long we have a dust bowl at the top of our street?
I hope we never would create a dust bowl. We'll contain that stuff on, on site, but the, the residential portion of this would be 14 months. Start to then.
Yeah, and to back what Andy said, put the commercial on the front. As a former owner of a kid's crossing, I don't want to drive by kids' crossing at all.
By the way, we completely agree.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other, yes?
So, hi, Professor Colossus, I live at 105 Hickory Hill. So will there be any low-income housing in here?
This is strictly market rate.
Strictly market rate. And just to reiterate about the traffic light, it's very dangerous getting out of there in the morning, so I can't imagine what traffic is going to be like with 200 more units. Most families have more than one car, so I think that, I mean, there definitely needs to be a traffic light.
Again, and just to go back to the gentleman that raised the question and tie the pieces together, these types of questions are what you typically have during the site plan review process, which is exactly the last phase of the process. If we changed nothing, and the zoning state and the applicant decided to go forward with existing zoning, they would go to the ZBA first, and if they got the special permit for the ZBA, they would come back to the planning board for this process where we would have a very more detailed version of exactly what we're doing now.
Okay.
So we're, we are tying a bunch of things together.
Yeah, and I guess I'm not understanding why, like, the whole process is flip-flopped if the property has been for sale for such a long time?
Well, I mean, the property has been on sale for a long period of time, but we can't do anything on the planning board until somebody comes forward with a proposal.
No, I understand that, I guess, like, it just seems like we're rushing right now, like, for the proposal to get things changed, and the property's been for sale for a while, so I guess, I mean...
Part of the problem is we only have town meeting once a year, and the, the timing of this is a little bit awkward. I mean, if, we would have much preferred this happen six months earlier, but it didn't, so we're doing the best we can.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Jeff Kaplan, 111 Hickory Hill, neighbors of these two. And a couple of points, I guess. I have a question. Have you ever looked at, I don't know, survey or study? I know Andrew said that retail isn't really that, doing that well, I guess, but it seems to be picking up. But have you ever looked at more mixed-use and a little bit less residential? Or is that not financially feasible for the apartments?
I can only comment on the residential portion because that's the piece that our firm is going to be developing. I think that the, that the mixed-use, to this gentleman's point, this particular slide is the one that we happen to prefer anyway.
I like this one.
We like that concept better anyway. So using that, there's only a certain amount of frontage.
Yeah.
And I think Chris laid it out perfectly. The ability to create the massing along that front, there's only so much frontage. And I think using that for the retail seems to make the most sense, and going any further doesn't really make a whole heck of a sense.
From experience on 125, it's not a pleasant road to sit by. There's no, I mean, Mad Maggie's, you're sitting there eating ice cream and these trucks are flying by. So I was just thinking, like, if you moved the, almost like a miniature rhythm outlets, like, kind of like, you know, go into it versus just along the road of some sort. Anyway, that, I'm not an architect or anything, but my second point, or comment, I guess, is the runway. I, I live 1.2 miles from the runway, and those Lear jets are allowed.
We can hear.
I mean, that's very big base. I couldn't imagine standing at the corner of that property when one of those Lear jets take off. I don't know if you know that, or have you experienced that? Knowing it and experiencing are two different things.
Because him and I...
I'm just a little FYI, I guess.
There's woods. See all those houses right there? There's a couple. Yeah, over 100 houses. Then there's woods in between there and our houses?
Yes.
And we can hear the train.
Yes, the train, I mean, I knew that moving, and so I don't probably...
It's white noise now, but...
But I couldn't, I couldn't imagine living in a one-bedroom. I just, a little...
Just letting you know.
I'm just letting you know because that's not just turnaround runway.
But, I mean, this looks good with the...
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's without our scope, fair enough.
No, I'm just letting you know.
So let us move on, we've been at this for a while. So, any other questions? We, we thank you all for coming and, and listening carefully. As we said, the, the situation here is slightly unorthodox process, but this is an informal discussion. We are going to be back when for the formal?
April 19.
And we will probably be addressing, as we said, some of the issues in this proposal are town-wide, so we have to address them as well. And that may be the real reason why we do this, but we wanted to, you know, this worked out pretty well because you got an advanced idea of the general concept of what's potentially going to go on this property, which I think is really good. And actually, to tell you the truth, for me, this is really interesting for me because, and for I think the rest of the board, because you, you're seeing how some of the sausage-making, about how people start the development process and work their way through it. Usually, you just see the end product, and now you're seeing actually a lot of the hard work that goes on as part of this, and I think that's helpful so you can kind of see how the answer ended up, which, which I think is good, so. Good. Yeah, sure.
So, John, I know you had some preliminary comments before we started all this, but could you just sum up again for us why are these changes important to this idea?
Well, you know, as I indicated before, you know, it's sort of consistent with a process that we grew back with the West Mill. We're trying to find a process that would allow for sort of a consolidated review, not necessarily, you know, you know, sacrificing sort of the details of review, but, you know, every city in town is competing for, for retail and other types of uses. And what we're trying to do is consolidate the review process through, through the planning board, just like we did with, with West Mill. We're, we're looking at the, giving the ability of planning board by special permit to waive the height requirement, just like we did with, with West Mill. It's a different project, but it's, but it's conceptually the same type of process that we're looking at here, except for the fact that, you know, we don't have the buildings on the site. So, you know, we're at a disadvantage only because of the fact that the agreement was, was just signed not too long ago. And so that's why we're here this evening to try to get a feel from the board as to whether, you know, in terms of our design and, you know, consequent zoning changes, whether we're in the right, going in the right direction. And so there's the planning board process that we're going to have a formal hearing on 19th. But basically, what we're looking to do again is... on the 19th, but basically what we're looking to do again is, is to consolidate reviews of the planning board. The planning board will have its special permit granting authority, even if we hit all the criteria, the planning board may not agree and deny us. So we're just at least trying to get on to the, to the green, so to speak, to allow for rezoning to occur and then with all these good questions that are asked, try to, to resolve them one by one through the normal site plan review process. And that's, that's all we're asking for.
Sir?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, members.
If anyone has any comments between now and the 19th?
Want a paper copy, one electronic?
I'll talk to you. I'll talk to you.
Is Tom here?
Tom, he's gonna come, he must be out front. He was gonna, he was, okay, the Stormwater one should be fairly quick.
No, there are some.
What? The Stormwater, it's the town meeting for the warrant article, the one we skipped. Do you want to do the Stormwater warrant article or do you want to carry it to the next time?
We skipped it.
Okay, that's fine, it's just it's the night for it to open, so I want to at least acknowledge it.
Do we, we have approval, do we?
We do.
I'll make a motion to approve the margin second, 2017, then it's entered second.
Second. Are you guys ready to vote on that important matter?
Yes.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so now we get into the, the other stuff, one, it's Prophecy, so, can you give us our script?
Yes, yes. I have copies for everybody, so whoever would like to read that.
I move to go into executive session for consultation with town council for confidential legal advice and to discuss litigation in case of 1600 Ausgood Solar LLC versus North Andover Planning Board. And the chair declared that an open meeting would be detrimental to the town's litigation strategy and not return to open session.
Second?
Second.[1783.22]